Everybody, thank you for being here tonight. We're gonna go ahead and get this started. Everybody like to take their seats. We'd like to thank you all for being here tonight at the 2017 Boulder Chamber City Council Candidate Forum. My name's Andrea Medigal. I'm Director of Public Affairs at the Boulder Chamber. I'm getting the sign for the sound guy to turn it down in the back.
It sounds good.
Okay, do we have a sound guy?
Yes.
So, thank you all for being here tonight. We'd like to thank these candidates. They are the individuals that are going through the next three months of campaigning and putting in the effort to do this for the community. The personal sacrifice that they're gonna make is impressive and totally respect everything that they do for this community and trying to provide leadership for us. So, big round of applause to those people. And the good news is you get to meet all fourteen of them tonight. They are all here. We will see seven at a time, but every single one of them that's running has been, has agreed to be here tonight. For everybody that cannot make it, they're watching at home on Facebook Live. So, candidates right there at that iPhone. You have your home audience that is watching this through the Boulder Chamber's Facebook page. So, another thanks to all the other organizations that are putting on these kinds of forums and giving the community the ability to meet these candidates and hear it from them. If there's any of those forums, people have been asking me, please send those forums to me. I'd love to get the word out to the rest of the community. So, every member of the Boulder Chamber team that made this happen tonight, thank you very much. I know how hard it was, and we've been working up till right about now. I think we're still doing stuff all around here. So, we're doing this for the candidates here. We want to reward their effort that they're about to put in, and we're doing this for the community. All of you, thank you for being here tonight. So, with that being said, I want to introduce the President and CEO of the Boulder Chamber, John Tare.
That was the applause for Andrea. I expect mine louder. Okay, so I'm gonna be relatively quick and just say two things that are important to emphasize. First of all, we do thank very much the candidates who have agreed to put themselves out there for this election season. You know, it's easy to sit in the audience and watch these folks stammer through their answers to these questions, okay? And, you know, critique, but it's not so easy to sit up here and field those questions and to offer up their opinions in front of all of you. So, we thank them so much for putting themselves out on behalf of our community. It means a lot to us. And the second thing I'll say is, you know, listen, at the end of the day, we know that not all of these folks are going to win a seat on the Boulder City Council. And it's our commitment, the Boulder Chamber, but I know also all the other partners to this event, that this is part of a relationship that we are starting with all of you, some of whom we already have had the opportunity to, to work with in their capacity in City Council. But listen, you are people who are putting yourselves out in public service, and we hope that regardless of whether you win a seat on the election, we look forward to working with you on City Council. We look forward to working with you in whatever capacity you choose or are elected to. So, this is the beginning of that partnership. And speaking of partnership, to bring this event together was a significant effort, not just of the Boulder Chamber, but all the partners who are identified with, and you see their logos. And I want to call them out specifically because they are folks, organizations, diversity of them, all representing different issues and interests in this community. But they've come together to make sure that we create a forum that is educational, balanced, and informative for all of you. So, let me just call them out. Top of the list, Community Cycles, Sue Prant, maybe just raise your hand right there. Thank you, Sue. Human Services Alliance of Boulder County, Susan Cannon right there. Thank you, Susan. Better Boulder, I think Ken Hotard and Sue Prant are the chairs, but if there's any on the steering committee. Open Boulder, I know that Andy couldn't be here, but just in the back, Jessica Gates right there. I know Jim and Chris in the back as well. So, thank you, thank you all. Boulder Area Realtors Association, another reason to acknowledge Ken Hotard. Where's Ken? There's Ken Hotard right there. And then the Urban Land Institute. I know that Mike takes the bus up here every day and then bikes him. He might not be here on time, but when you see him, thank him, okay? So, those are our partners, all of them doing important work in our community, and none other more important than making sure everybody's informed about the election. The other partners and the people we need to thank for making this event possible are the sponsors. So, there are two in particular, and I'm gonna first acknowledge Yellow Scene has been a significant supporter of this. So, is there a representative of Yellow Scene out there? Thank you so much for the sponsorship of this event. And then, another leading business in our community, one that is doing important things globally with technology advancements, but also a great community partner, one that's contributing a lot to the welfare of this community in general. It's part of their corporate spirit. And that is the Zayo Group. Zayo Group, please, big round of applause. One of those efforts I've witnessed here from that organization. And I want to introduce somebody who has been a close partner of mine now. She works on her policy committee, but she's also a great friend, Monica Lang.
Thank you, Don. Wow, look at this. Love seeing everyone out in the crowd. Thank you for taking the time out this evening to join us here. As John mentioned, I am Chief of Staff to Founder, Chairman, and CEO Dan Caruso. And on his behalf and all of the employees at Zayo, thank you for coming out to hear this valuable conversation. I wanted to just kind of say that, you know what? It is so wonderful to see people who are active and interested in Boulder, where it's going, and interested in seeing who our leaders are going to be, taking this great city into the future. And so, thank you, candidates, for your investment into the community and coming out this evening to share with us your values and policy and how you see Boulder evolving into the future. Zayo is very much so committed to Boulder. We've got four hundred and fifty employees here, and we expect Boulder to be our headquarters forever. We have a big interest in Boulder. Our employees in particular, they too are interested in a place where they can live and work. We all know that we don't necessarily have the same views on the political spectrum, but one thing that is consistent is that we all care, and we all love this beautiful city. And so, tonight is an educational forum to meet the candidates, to hear their perspective, and in hopes to help you be able to choose candidates that align with your values as you look to have families and may boulder your home forever. So, with that being said, I turn it back to John, and thank you again for coming out.
Thank you, Monica. Thank you all so much, Ian, and Sue, for allowing us into your facility for this event. And I will just say that we had the fire marshals in. We had to find out how many people we could actually accommodate, so I think we're under that line. I think we're under that line. So, without further ado, it's my great pleasure to introduce the moderator, the esteemed moderator for this event, Leslie Durgan. You know her as the former Boulder Mayor, but she's been active in this community in a number of issues, affordable housing. She's worked with the Boulder Chamber in a number of issues, and she's somebody who I think, if she can't control herself, might tell these candidates, "What the hell are you doing?" But she's a great friend, and she is somebody who we're very fortunate, oh, you got your mic. Very fortunate to have her in the moderator role. So, welcome, Leslie. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you all. I probably wouldn't say, "What the hell are you doing?", but I would assure you that there's always a glass of wine or beer at the end of the day. So, let me quickly run through the ground rules before we start. And these have been shared with the candidates, so no surprise here. But we are really committed in this forum, one would hope every forum, but certainly this forum, to being fair and respectful to all candidates. So, I am gonna ask all of you, please, not to cheer, not to boo, not to raise signs, but really to give the opportunity to the candidates to tell you what they're thinking and what their proposals are. And anything that you do in the audience to take away from that, takes away from them. So, I think we've all committed to that, and I hope you can as well. We are going to do a very sort of spirited round through public policy because with fourteen candidates, we don't have a lot of time. So, we're gonna be pretty draconian in time, I will tell you that. I think all of you know that as well. And I'm gonna move my chair around because I can't see everybody. That's hard. Okay. So, what we're gonna do is first, because we're gonna have, in essence, two waves of candidates, seven each. We have fourteen total, to ask each candidate to spend two minutes with an introductory statement. What, who are you and why are you running? And then, each candidate will have a content question, and they have been developed by many of the partners that you've just heard John explain, but they have been assigned totally at random. So, it's not that you, I said, "Oh, so-and-so is interested in this topic. I'll give him or her that." They're totally random, and so some of you may go, "Damn, I was hoping I wouldn't get that question." And others, I mean, may go, "I'm ready." But these questions have all been shared with the candidates well in advance, so that none of them should be a surprise, although some probably more welcome than others. Then, we're gonna ask each of these candidates to take up to two minutes to answer. In essence, it's a bonus question, which I will give them a choice of two. And then, what we're going to do is get the next wave of candidates up and follow the same model. We are gonna be broadcasting this live from Boulder Chamber Facebook, and we have asked each of the candidates for their website, a picture, and to answer each of the questions that have been presented, so that they all can be posted and citizens can see what every candidate thinks on a variety of topics. And just to make things interesting, Kate, who is our timekeeper, contrary to what you might think would be common sense, Kate. It's funny, no, it's okay. She, when she holds up the red sign, it means to all of you, you have one minute left of the two minutes you've been allotted. And when she holds up the yellow sign, it means time's up. It's a little backwards from what we normally do at City Council, but we're keeping things interesting. Let's start, shall we, with asking each of the candidates to take up to two minutes to answer the following question. And that is, "Tell us who you are, and besides loving Boulder, which we all do, what is the most compelling reason for why you're running for City Council?" And Matt, I'm gonna start with you.
I'm Matt Benjamin. I've lived in Boulder sixteen years, and I think I have a very interesting opportunity to sort of share with you not just who I am, but why I'm running. It's sort of an interesting irony here, certainly because this is hosted by the Boulder Chamber. I went to school starting in business, ended up going into astrophysics, and then ended up running a business in science and education. So, sometimes things have a funny way of being full circle, and there's somewhat of an interesting irony in that. I'm running very simply because it's our generation's time to lead the change we envisioned for this world. This is an interesting time in our country, in our state, and certainly locally. There's a lot of polarization at all levels of government. And what I'm interested in is really trying to say, you know what? Let's not feed into that, and let's not fall victim to that polarization. Real change that we want to view for this world percolates up. It does not trickle down, and I've seen that in the hundreds of thousands of young school kids. I've had a chance to educate, not just directly, but through planetarium shows I've written and educational programs that I've researched and also implemented with NASA and NOAA and many others. So, thank you very much.
So, just in case, I don't want to shut you off, Matt. The red means you've got a minute left. You're okay? You're done? Okay, but let me make, make clear. Red means you've got a minute left. Yellow means time's up. Eric.
Thanks, Leslie. Hi, I'm Eric Budd, and I'm running for Boulder City Council because I believe we need bold, progressive leadership to fight climate change, to honestly face our critical housing and transportation demands, and to create a more welcoming community with broader participation in local decisions. I think we can all agree that we're not gonna see climate progress at the federal level. So, it's up to Boulder to continue to act and take bold, bold actions to decarbonize at the local level. But that's not the only pressing issue in Boulder. This is a city that is not meeting the needs of working-class people. We need to make sure that this is a place where the middle class can afford to live, because we need for them to live here. As you, as you know, Boulder has sixty thousand daily in commuters, and it's not gonna be productive if we continue to talk about whether or not Boulder, or how, whether or not Boulder will grow, because that's, not acknowledging that we're going to grow is not in the best interest of our environment or our people. And so, we need a City Council that understands that antagonism with businesses is not in the best interest of the people who need those jobs in, with here in Boulder. So, we need an economy that's really designed to work for the benefit of all people in the community. And in order to do that, we need younger people like me to be represented on the Boulder City Council. About, less than half of people in the city actually participate in local elections, and that's a problem. If we want to get policies that represent the majority of people, then we need to make sure that the majority of people are being represented. So, I'll work to lead that majority, and I would be honored to serve on the Boulder City Council. Thank you.
Ian. Evening, everyone, and welcome to all the candidates. My name is Dan Burton, and I'm running for City Council because I have served for two years on the council, and I've learned so much in that two years about what I feel needs to be done to improve the city and improve the community. I hope to win a four-year seat along with some of these other fine people, and I hope to make a real difference in the city and in the council. I hope to bring practical, common-sense approach with my entrepreneurial background around solutions like the environment, the economy, transportation, and the arts. So, I'd like to talk about three things that will be my biggest focus. Number one, housing. We don't have enough housing for our employees, and housing diversity has been called for over and over in every survey that we've done as the highest need in this community. I have a record for voting for housing, whether it be affordable housing, or housing projects that we buy, or creative ideas like ADUs, splitting lots, et cetera. It's not about developers. This is about people and serving people. Number two is governance and accountability. We have the biggest budget of all cities in Colorado, our size, and I think we do a good job of managing that. But let's face it, our taxes are going up, and it's council's responsibility to keep an eye on spending the dollars to maximize the output for the community. So, I'll have my eyes on the budget. And that brings me to number three, which is muni and the environment. I am an environmentalist. I supported the goals for the muni, but we've spent over thirteen million dollars of cash so far, and we've really not got a lot to show for it. So, yesterday, XL announced that they have committed to some new initiatives, and I'd like to talk about that in my final comments. Thank you.
Ed.
My name's Ed Byrne. If someone has my manila folder with the talking points, tell me when this is over how I did. I hope to bring balance, experience, expertise, and fiscal accountability to the City Council. I've lived in Boulder for thirty-six years. Family, work, volunteerism, diverse and varied community service put me in contact with a wide variety of people in the city of Boulder, all of whom are now friends and who will approach me freely, I'm quite sure, and let me know what they think as City Council deliberates any number of issues. We need to crowdsource our wisdom, and that's one of the ways we do it. As a former Assistant City Attorney, I know what's going on behind the curtains, and that can be important. We've got silos. They can be working together, but they don't always know it. One of council's roles is to make that work better. I was, I started the Alternated Dispute Resolution Committee for the Boulder County Bar Association, so I know how to focus on interests and not positions to bring out valuable information that can help us make decisions. I worked for the ski industry and discovered how environment and workforce challenges can impact your community, and I've certainly done that here. I was co-chair of the North Boulder Sub-Community Planning Process, and I'm on the Downtown Boulder Partnership, the Chamber Community Affairs Council, the Editorial Advisory Board, something you may have seen. What I've written, you know how I analyze issues and how I try to find creative solutions.
Ed, Mike.
And just a word to all the folks, make sure to speak into the mic. That way, they can also hear it on the Facebook feed, so just a heads up on that.
So, my four focuses for council, which should be, a board of directors and not a management team, is fiscal accountability. We shouldn't have to go to the voters for a fire station, and we shouldn't have forty checkbooks, and you can't use your refrigerator phone to fix your microwave. And every time we go to the voters, we create earmark phones that can't be used for other purposes. Neighborhood and regional outreach are both important. Stability of discourse is critical. We're losing the reasonable voices in the room, and we need to get them back. Thank you very much.
Cindy.
Let me see if I can arrange things here. I'm Cindy Carlisle, and I may look a little differently to some of you from the last time you saw me, and that's because I've had a bout with cancer. Finished my treatment this spring, and now I'm strong, ready to manage the challenges of the Boulder City Council. I'm a long-term Boulder resident, a CU grad, mother of two children who were born and raised in Boulder. Twice elected official, once to the Boulder City Council and to the CU Board of Regents. And I, along with many of you, have invested time, energy, and money into helping make Boulder the creative and alluring place that it is. The reason that I'm running is because I think Boulder stands at a crossroads in this election with two clear choices. Traditional progressive values and greater trust in government on the one hand, and adherence to the principles of money and dwindling trust in government on the other. I think current government needs, needs to listen to its citizens more in the areas of affordability, and that's a big umbrella. It's not just housing. It is also commercial space, so that small businesses can operate successfully in this community. Climate change, the citizens have voted twice to say that they affirm this community moving forward, doing what we can do. I support the municipalization effort. There's, we need to see it through to the end. That's what we agreed to in the first place. And so, I'd like to see that continue and see what other strategies we need to get there. I have zero minutes left. I'll take more up later. Thank you.
Camilo.
Hello. Thank you all for having me at the Chamber. Appreciate it. So, my name's Camilo Casas, and everyone here knows exactly when I moved to Boulder, unfortunately, because I came in with the floods, so it wasn't that long ago. Just coming up on three years now, or four years now. I was working with FEMA at the time, and I had no intention of continuing my work with disasters. My specialty with FEMA was actually in community engagement through digital participation platforms. But my wife and I had determined we wanted to actually move to a community that was on the cutting edge of both progressivism, but also of technology. And when we were looking for where to move, the floods hit, and it just was a sign that this was it. And I hate to say it because it's so tragic, but that was when, so after two years of serving our wonderful community here and getting to know it very well through my work with FEMA, and then additional two years, I kind of got sucked into working with moving ten sexual assault, doing sexual violence prevention education, which is something I believe in. I now have the opportunity to roll out here, something that I'm really excited about. And I will have four more minutes to get into it in more detail. But in a nutshell, the way that we do democracy is broken. It's broken at a municipal level, at a state level, at a federal level, at a global level. And we need to disrupt democracy in order to fix it. We've been working for the last four years, me and my partners, on a digital democracy platform that will enable a constituency to govern in a seat, and with your leadership, we can incubate that here in Boulder. I look forward to telling you more about that, but it's something that's been bubbling up around the world. And in this country, if it can't happen in Boulder, then it's not gonna happen anywhere. Thank you.
And John, your turn.
Well, I have to start by saying that I really appreciate, as a, as a water engineer, I appreciate Camilo's story. That's the most positive result of the flood. My name is John Burstall. I'm a, I've grown up in Boulder and have lived here for most of my life. I've raised two kids here with my wife, Heidi, and they have went to the same schools in Boulder Valley School District that I did. And my objective in running is to make Boulder as, as wonderful a place as it possibly can be. I served as a member and chair of the Boulder Planning Board from 2014 to 2017, and of the Boulder County Planning Commission from 2008 to 2013. So, I think that that has given me some insight into a number of the issues that Boulder and Boulder County are dealing with. As a member of the Boulder City Council, I'll support development with community benefits that are appropriate to the development, climate action, the Boulder's climate goals, which, and its attempts to move towards municipalization, an open, consistent, responsive city government. I look forward to managed growth and sustainable land use, and I am very interested in ensuring that neighborhood character and improvement are major factors in the decisions that Boulder makes moving forward with respect to developing housing for its residents and would-be residents. And I am very interested in ensuring that affordability of housing is a major consideration in our decisions. But, uh-oh, did the yellow card already flash? Okay, I better be quiet now.
Two minutes is remarkably short. It really is. So, if you would hand the mic back to Matt. So, the next section is that we're gonna ask questions that were developed by some of the partners who are supporting this forum. And then, as I mentioned earlier, they are completely randomly assigned, and we're just gonna go through again the, the same order that we did. You'll have two minutes to answer this question. I would also remind the audience that after all this is over, then the next wave of candidates comes up. We'll repeat the same format. Then, we'll have at least thirty minutes, if the timing works, and we're hoping it will, for you all to mix and mingle with the candidates. So, if you've got a question, you'll be able to ask it, but not in this forum, instead out there, okay? So, Matt, you ready?
Let's do it.
All right. "The city has spent a considerable amount of time on buying the Boulder Community Hospital site. The site currently sits vacant and debt service accrues. Should this project be accelerated, and how should it be developed?"
It's a good question, and this is, you know, one of the larger pieces of property that we have to work with in our city. And as many of the candidates have mentioned, and I share this, affordable housing is really sort of at the, at the core of what we face here in being able to get affordability into this community, but also to really help the middle class. And with regards to the Boulder Community Hospital site, we've seen a vision plan for, for this site, and I think it has a lot of really key elements in that vision plan. There's some green zone, and there's some other affordability in there, and the mixed use, I think, is a fantastic way to go. I'd like to see a little bit more in the details of how this goes. But in terms of accelerating this project, I really think it's important that we do our due diligence and not necessarily unnecessarily... due diligence and not necessarily accelerate things at the sake of maybe losing some of that quality. Less can be more, and I think it's vital that we do it right and do it the right way because it is such a large facility.
Okay, thank you. The next question is for Eric. "A lot happened today at the PUC. I'm sure that the outcomes are dense and complicated and may involve understanding that none of us really have. So with that understanding that something happened today and many of us don't know what it is..."
I'm furious to be rewriting my answer in my head.
"...never stops city council from jumping in. The question was, 'Do you support Boulder's drive to municipalize its electric utility? If so, what are the limits on taxpayer dollars and time that you are prepared to spend to achieve that goal? And if you don't support that, how would you propose to achieve Boulder's renewable energy goals?'" Eric?
Thank you. I have supported and I continue to support the effort for municipalization. And I think in a lot of ways, it's difficult for the community to really understand why that is. And I'll just lay out a little bit about why I believe that. And a lot of it's driven from the regulatory structure that we have in Colorado that really institutes a legalized monopoly. And so the incentives really of our system are driving the motives of Excel Energy. And I don't fault Excel really at all for any of the decisions that they made. Those are all, all of the decisions that they made about the energy sources that they use and the methods that they've used are all understandable, given the system that we have. And the reason that I support municipalization is because I see this as a way, not for the city to duplicate what Excel is doing. That's really not the intention. It's looking at how the model of energy utilities is changing because the market and the demands are changing. And so I see municipalization as a way to decouple energy production from the actual implementation at a city level. And that, in a lot of ways, under the system that we have, we need to move forward to continue to democratize, decentralize, and decarbonize our energy system. And currently, this is the best way that we have to do it. I was really heartened when I saw Excel Energy's announcement yesterday. They are definitely moving in the right direction. I don't know how much I can say that that's from the efforts in Boulder, but I believe that we are leaders in this community and we are making the appropriate steps to move forward. That being said, I'm looking very closely, and I was watching the PUC deliberations today. And so I would like to see what's in the outcomes and understand how much more legal work has to go forward in order for Boulder to achieve its goals here. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Jan, you're next. "Despite Boulder's reputation as a green community, our per capita carbon footprint is pretty high. How can we shape our built environment and transportation systems for lower impact?"
Our city has done some very brave things 20 or 30 years ago with the Blue Line and with the purchase of open space and with height limitations. And all of that has created the space that we love in Boulder. And so those are all very good things. But they have also given us a situation where we have restrictions on how we grow. And so one of the intents back then was to have a dense urban core surrounded by green space. And we have not really allowed ourselves to have that dense urban core. So what's happening? We have 60,000 people driving in to work every day, and that's not good from a pollution standpoint. And we have people who can't afford to live here. Seventy-five percent of our built environment is single-family housing, which is not the most effective utilization of space. So one of the things that we have to look at from a Boulder standpoint is how can we build more density in the right kind of way that doesn't feel like too heavy of growth and that has the limitations of height and doesn't encroach upon open space, et cetera? There are many, many creative ways we could do that. As one example, accessory dwelling units is something that is taking off all over the country and particularly in the Northwest, where an owner of a property rather than a developer can put a small build on to their house or a small unit and house, for example, one of our workers. So those are the kinds of things that we need to look at creatively to use the space that we've got within the core of Boulder. Thank you.
Okay, Ed Byrne. "What is your vision for Boulder's growth and development over the next 20 years?"
Tremendous.
One of the mistakes Boulder...
Ed, Ed, microphone up.
No one's ever asked me to speak louder. Ours is a regional challenge more than it's ever been before. We're not going to solve Boulder's growth, density, traffic congestion, walkable neighborhood challenges within our footprint necessarily. We have 65,000 extra people or 60,000 extra people in town every day. They're already part of the mix. We shouldn't build another dwelling unit that doesn't appeal directly to one of our in commuters. And the way we find out is we ask them. What would you like? What sort of amenities would allow you to live in a smaller place to avoid this horrible commute that will only get worse? As Chair of the North Boulder Sub-Community Plan, we've worked on principles for neighborhood development, and we focused on primary self-sufficiency, the ability to workshop and play closer to where you sleep. Ultimately, that's what will unwind our traffic. We now have to drive almost everywhere to do almost anything. And that's by design. You're planning zoning, has the houses in one place and the businesses in another, and you got to drive to them all. We have tremendous opportunity in Boulder to reconfigure the land use patterns that are making us crazy today. Just imagine east of Foothills Highway, where we have many jobs. Good and bad, but a lot of jobs and everybody's driving in from east Boulder County. Those people driving in from east Boulder County will find their next job out there. And then we're going to have to pay more and more for the workforce we need to do the things that are so wonderful about Boulder, creative innovation. We could build great neighborhoods there, and complete neighborhoods are the thought I want you to leave here from here today. We don't just need complete streets. We need complete neighborhoods where you've got retail, commercial, and housing. And even in our existing residential areas, we sit down with the neighbors, we find out, why are you leaving your neighborhood today? What would you buy locally if it was available? And then you try to find locations where you can create building centers for them.
"What are your specific strategies for promoting civil public discourse around growth and development? Please indicate what level of commitment you would have in regards to collaboration, consensus building, and joint problem solving to address this issue."
Thank you. I had the good fortune of hearing the citizen, the public participation working group, present on Monday night, maybe Tuesday night, Leslie, you weren't there. And it was actually very enlightening to hear this group. It was convened, I believe, by the council or the manager. And they met 30 times from last September to the present. And one of the things they talked about is how one engages community earlier in order to avoid conflict. And the big takeaway on this is that if you do this early enough and reach out to people, and I think this was done on the North Boulder Sub-Community Plan, where all voices were heard, so that there is consensus. One may not get everything they want, but everybody has a chance to be heard. And that brings a good deal of satisfaction. I would be very committed to enacting the kinds of things that they, the working group, talked about, starting with a change in the culture of the council. And that means you really, one really has to, the council itself has to embrace this concept and start early, not have people think that they're being heard when they come do their two minutes or whatever it is shared at the microphone. So that is how I would try to build community consensus around areas of conflict.
Thank you. Camilo, you're up next. And the question is, "What do you see as the vital components to the future of Boulder's economic vitality? And what specific strategies would you support as a council member to maintain a vibrant economy?"
I don't know. And here's the thing. I mean, I have some opinions on that. I have opinions on all, everything that's being discussed right now. But do I have the answer? No. I don't think anyone on this stage has the exact answer. And this is one of the problems with pure representative democracy that we have. You vote for someone and then all of a sudden they're holding your political agency for two years, four years, whatever. And they're, you know, they can listen to your emails and your phone calls, but ultimately they're going to do whatever they think is best. And we're disrupting that. In here, the answer to that question lies, you guys are the leaders, you're the economic, you've made businesses. I haven't started a business here. You've hired people. I haven't hired anyone here. You have that answer. But thus far, the only mechanism that you have to participate in the city council is lobbying your city council people. And that works, that works to a certain degree. But I think we can do better. And this is getting to this platform that we've built. We've created a mechanism in which you can leave. You don't need to run for city council. But if something comes up, if there is an issue that arises that you feel strongly about, that you are a topic expert on, you can become active in our system and lobby your network of supporters, your neighbors, your community colleagues to support you. And if you get a consensus amongst all the resident voters in Boulder, I will do what they say. This is an idea that is radical. I believe it's the future of democracy. It's been bubbling up around the world, and I think that we are the community to bring it to the United States. Come August, you're going to have an opportunity to play with this, to touch it, to feel it, to experience what this means. The essence of it is, I, if you vote for me, one of the nine seats on the council is going to be your voice, if you can make a compelling enough argument to your neighbors on any issue. I don't have any issues. I have my opinions, but they'll be expressed equally as all of yours.
Thank you, Camilo. And John, let me ask this question for you, which I just lost. Tell us your, no, I've got the wrong one. Tell, I apologize here. Do you support Boulder's inclusionary housing ordinance requirements to produce permanently affordable housing? Should the requirements include permanently affordable middle-income housing? And what do you think is the appropriate mix of permanently affordable rental versus ownership units?
Yes, yes, and yes. I think that's the quickest version. I do support the inclusionary housing requirements. I do believe that the housing requirements should include both middle-income and lower-income housing. And what was the third aspect?
The third is the proportion of rental versus ownership.
Well, I don't have a number to come with on that, but I strongly support both aspects of home, both homeownership and rental because that suits different people in different But I can't resist taking this time to respond to Camilo's suggestions. And I have to say that I can't think of a single issue that I have ever been aware of in Boulder where there was consensus. So I wish you luck on that. But, so anyway, to go back to the inclusionary housing, I strongly support it and I think that it should be required on-site to some degree, in addition to the ability to purchase, to support the other city housing, affordable housing efforts that are presently taking place.
Thank you. Okay, the next of this group. Is each member, each candidate gets a two-minute opportunity to answer one of these two questions. One is, "What is the most important issue to you in Boulder? And what kind of leadership will you provide for addressing it? Or your legacy? As a Boulder City Council member, what kind of legacy would you look to leave?" So either most important issue and how would you address it as a leader? Or what is the legacy that you would hope you would leave when you left city council? So let's turn first to you, Matt.
Thank you. I'm still young, so I'm building my legacy every day. So I can't quite say that there's one to leave at this juncture in my life. I'm going to stick to what is the most important issue. And for me, this has to do with really the umbrella from which all the issues that have been discussed either succeed or fail. And that's effective governance. And that's something that I think we're really challenged with here, and not because we have had people leading us. That's not it at all. It has to do with many ways, sort of the system we have and many of the expectations we place on our local government. And what I really subscribe to is two real quick mantras. Less is more and quality over quantity. And this is the core of how many of my former colleagues put spacecraft around Mars, flew a spacecraft past Pluto, was they stuck to their goals and they looked at the quality versus the quantity of what they were trying to achieve. And it was through well-defined goals and identifying a process through an evidence-based decision-making that we were able to set a course to reach those goals. And there are a lot of things through affordable housing, our pursuit of municipal utility, homelessness, a bunch of these issues, transportation, where we've set goals, but we fall in short of those goals. And that is because we are choosing quality, not quality, over quantity. And that is an issue that we face. And we're choosing more versus doing less and getting more out of it. And I really want to use a lot of what I've leveraged in science, in education, in my work with NASA and NOAA, to really kind of bring a little bit more of that quality to the type of policies that we want to drive here in Boulder. We expect that of our leaders, and that's what I know I can bring as a member of the city council. And I think it's vital that all of us look at all of these issues and realize that it is effective governance that is the vehicle that allows us to achieve great things or fall short of our goals and aspirations with regards to those goals that we set here in this community. So I want to say thank you for your time. Thank you all for being here and being a contributing member of this community. And I want to say again, my name is Matt Benjamin and I'm running for city council.
Thank you, Matt. Eric, your turn.
Thank you. I'd like to talk about my legacy on the Boulder City Council. A little bit more about me. I grew up in Missouri, and I grew up in a place that didn't have a culture of protecting the environment or really taking care in the natural surroundings. And so when I came to Boulder, I really developed a great appreciation for how we've put in the height limit to preserve views, to how we've taxed ourselves to buy the open space around the city. And that's really been powerful to me. But as I've lived here, I've also seen the increasing financial pressures on myself and people in the community because of these policies. And so I want to take that perspective as well as looking through the lens of myself as an economist and community leader and bring that to Boulder City Council. And so at the end of my time on city council, I want my legacy to be someone who fought to protect the water, land, and air, but to also strengthen the economy and to also make sure the needs of the people in the community are being met. It's really important to me that we move forward on those goals. I want to work to build coalitions with the brilliant people in Boulder, who are the scientists, the environmentalists, and the business leaders, to really build coalitions to work on these very hard problems. And I want to lead that coalition. Please vote for me, Eric Budd, for Boulder City Council.
Jan?
Thank you, Leslie. I hope that my legacy will be as a balanced, thoughtful leader that listens to our residents and acts on their concerns. And the three things that I'm going to focus on for these points are, number one, housing; number two, governance and accountability; and number three, the environment. So I've already mentioned the heavy requirement that we have for housing and the fact that we need to stand up for diversity in this community, and diversity will be brought by housing. And I've already proven that I will vote for housing and support creative ideas for housing. Number two is governance and accountability. I've mentioned that I'm a bit of the watch, the budget watchdog... Number two is governance and accountability. I've mentioned that I'm a bit of the budget watchdog. I can give you an example. In our city, even though we manage our budget right, we do not have centralized purchasing. So how many of you who run a business that's more than, you know, eight or nine departments do not have centralized purchasing? Probably not very many. Let's talk about governance. The Public Participation Working Group that we met with on Monday, one of the things they mentioned was we are doing too much. Several people have mentioned that. And on council, I can tell you, we feel that. We feel the brunt of that, bouncing from one thing to another. So one thing we needed to do in the city of Boulder is to focus on doing fewer things and do them better. And that's what will help draw younger people into the fold, like what we've got up here tonight. And the third is the environment, which is absolutely critical. I am not a cheerleader for the municipalization project. I am an evaluator of what all the options are out there. And as I see what happens and what unfolds, I try to make the absolute best decision for the environment in total and for the city of Boulder. Jan Burton, I hope you'll vote for me. Thank you.
Ed Byrne?
I'm going to play the grandpa card. This Eleanor Jane Byrne, my son's daughter. I hope when I'm through in council that people will have more hope and less fear about our future. There's every reason for Boulder to be confident. We have done so many things right over the years. We have the talent.
Ed, Ed, Mike.
Is that all you're going to remember?
I want everyone to hear you.
Oh, I'll bet you do. I've always been a fan of environmental stewardship and economic resiliency. I have been a part of Better Boulder from its inception and Open Boulder as a charter member. When I first came to Boulder, when my wife and I were driving out of town, they bought the SDC property at the edge of town, South Mesa. We had a business there. But the city of Boulder said, we're not just going to downzone it, we're going to buy it. They went into the private sector and they made it happen. Boulder has a very progressive private sector. We may need to drag them kicking and screaming to get some of our most important projects done, but they better still be there with us when we start to take action. City council has five votes. I'm sorry, there are nine city council seats. You get five votes. I bring institutional knowledge, not unlike Matt's, because it's hard-earned over 35 years, and planning and legal expertise, not unlike Andrew Schumaker's. And I hope to help individual homeowners with small dreams succeed, while Boulder continues to lead the world in environmental stewardship, economic resiliency, and quality of life. I hope you'll give me one of your five votes. Thank you.
Cindy?
The most important issue to me is that of community. We, in this community, have been fortunate to have many, as I mentioned earlier, who are working hard, have worked hard to put us where we are. I have a track record of listening to people in the community, both on the council and various other organizations and at the University of Colorado with faculty, staff, and students. I am committed to trying to bring the community together to move us forward, all of the community, on the issues of affordability, dealing with climate change, and public participation. Community is something that I think is built sometimes by walking into the others' camp. When I first ran for the city council, I ran on an exceedingly strong environmental platform. One of the things that happened to me when I was elected to a four-year term was that I was appointed as the city council's first liaison to the Chamber of Commerce's Bureau of Conference Services and Cultural Affairs, which some people may remember, but it was kind of in the dark ages. Dennis Knox was the head then of the chamber. Peggy Lamb was the head of that entity. And I learned a lot in working across the aisle with folks. It was really helpful. The business community is as important as any other in terms of underpinning this community. So I hope to be able to work with all of you as well as those other folks out there in the years to come. Thanks.
Thank you, Cindy. Camilo?
Legacy, right? So I'm not trying to talk about my legacy. But let's talk about the legacy of Boulder. Boulder has a brand. Boulder has an image around the world, and it was well-earned. I'm here because of that. You telegraphed out to the universe that this is a spot where people come to mix it up and envision and implement the future. And I believe that we can do that now with democratic participation. If we, if you all do this, you're going to be the first constituency in the United States to vote for this kind of a digital democracy platform. You're going to be planting a flag in our soil here that we are a community of the future, that we are a community that is not satisfied with our current systems of democratic participation, that we can do better, that we can tap into the wisdom of the crowd in a more effective manner. I guess the legacy that I would like to have here, but that I would like Boulder to have, frankly, is to be innovative, to be visionary, and at its essence, to increase the numbers of neurons firing on issues of public concern. That sounds a bit wonky, but that's literally what I'm trying to do. How can we connect more brains to arrive at solutions? There not always going to be consensus. Democracy is not that neat. But to get more participation in the decisions that we're all going to face, if you vote for me, one of the nine seats, one of five votes, will be to run that experiment and to experiment in the future of democratic participation. Thanks.
Thank you. John?
Every time I, every time I come back to Boulder on US 36 and come over Davidson Mesa and see that fantastic view of Boulder and the mountain backdrop, I rejoice. I think that is one of the sights that makes my heart leap. And I want to make sure that that will be the case with my children and their children also. I think about the generations that have come before and those that will come after. And those are the basis on which we should be making decisions in Boulder. Not, not for the benefit of the present necessarily, but for the benefit of our future generations. Boulder has a tradition of thinking like this, of paying it forward. This is why we engaged in a number of activities, like establishing the Blue Line or establishing our famous open space program, or even 100 years ago, buying our Boulder water ship. These were all investments made by the city for the benefit of future generations. I fear that we are making a change these days that focuses more on the benefits for the present than our future generations. And this is a matter of concern to me. I think this election will have a huge impact on these attitudes in Boulder. And I would like to seek your support in ensuring that Boulder's values of thinking forward, of thinking of the benefits for our children and their children are maintained. And I would respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
So let's thank all of our candidates that have already spoken. And what I'm going to ask is for these candidates to take seats and for the next group of candidates, the next seven, come forward. We're going to repeat this model. And we're moving forward so that we can include this portion and then we can all join outside and you can have private conversations with each of the candidates. So if we could do that. You know, it doesn't matter if you're in a particular order. It really doesn't. No, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter terribly, Andrea, but if you want to do it, fine. You're going to have to move. It doesn't matter that much. Barry, you're there, you're not sure.
He probably needed that over there.
Okay, Bill Riggler is going to be joining us in a second. But where did the mic go? Barry, could I ask you to give that down to Jill? So what we're going to do is ask each candidate to take up to two minutes to tell us a little about herself or himself and why they're running for Boulder City Council. Then we'll go back to those content questions that were assigned randomly. And then, as we just did, ask each candidate to take up to two minutes to talk about either their legacy or the most important issues, or clearly to ask for your support in your vote or they bring to Boulder City Council. So let's start with you, Jill, if you would. Who are you and why are you running?
Hi, thanks for being here. My name is Jill Adlergronau, and I am a mother. I am a businesswoman and winner of the 40 Under 40 Biz West Leaders. And I'm also a volunteer and a community activist. I'm running for city council because my absolute passion is in community work, is in thinking about the problems that affect us all and working towards solutions. Upon graduating with a degree in political science from the College of William &amp; Mary, 11 years ago, I moved straight to Boulder, which I'd visited in the past and thought was the coolest city I'd ever been to. I dove right into the Chamber of Commerce's Leadership Program. I joined the Board of New Era Colorado, where I served for five years. And I have served on multiple housing working groups. I'm currently the vice chair of the Board of Zoning Adjustments, and I'm a board member at Thistle Communities. I've also been a volunteer at the Boulder Homeless Shelter for three years and with Meals on Wheels for two years. I want to bring my passion for the community, my ability to research, to all of you as your city council member. The two most important issues that I see facing us today are housing, specifically approachable, accessible, affordable housing, and our energy future. I do support our efforts to municipalize. I think it's a wonderful opportunity, not only for the city, but for the business community to engage with us. On affordable housing, I believe that I bring a valuable voice, based on my experience. I've worked in our neighborhoods. I've worked in our affordable program. I've worked in our mobile home communities and have been an advocate for them. I've also worked with Thistle Communities, one of our nonprofit developer providers of housing. I believe that I bring rich knowledge and experience to this topic, and I look forward to bringing it to you.
Hi. Mic jumped in again?
Please, no, no. Say your name, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Mark McIntyre, and I'm running for council. I have lived in Boulder for about 40 years and three months. And I, when people say, why are you running? I think back to what brought me here when I was 17, and it was the outdoors. Being exposed to our open space and mountain park system was mind-bending as a young climber coming to Boulder, mainly for the climbing. But seeing an exciting and innovative and thinking and artistic community was something that kept me here. The people cycling, I bought my first bike at Turn on the Hill, and I worked at the Spoke on the Hill. And I've become a committed cyclist and environmentalist. And as an environmentalist, the other thing that brought me here and kept me here is a community-wide environmental ethos that I think that we may differ on some things, but we have, we do have a community-wide environmental ethos. But there was also, as a young person, I went to the University of Colorado, graduated with a bachelor of fine arts degree, but that didn't really pay the bills. So there was economic opportunity in Boulder. One of my first dream jobs was working for Novan Energy, which was the kind of original solar company founded here in Boulder some 35 years ago. So those things that brought me here are the same issues we're still dealing with here today. And that is, how do we maintain and deal with our open space system? How do we provide economic opportunity for people that get to live here, that are lucky enough to live here? And how do we provide flexible housing opportunities for them? So, oh, okay, well, hey, like, that's it. Thanks.
First off, I'd like to thank all of you for being here today. I think it's an amazing turnout, and it shows your commitment and how much you care about this town. I'm running for Boulder City Council because, as a native of Boulder, it is in my blood. Oh, I'm Yerba Nickel, sorry. As a native, you know, this town is in my blood, and it's part of who I am. I believe that I represent a fresh perspective. I'm a volunteer firefighter. I'm a local small business owner. I'm a former Thistle Affordable Housing resident, and I went on to purchase a home with my husband in the city portion of Gun Barrel. Because of these unique blends and the many worlds that I overlap, I believe that I'm in a nice situation to work with the many different groups that Boulder has. You know, Boulder is filled with incredibly unique, bright, educated individuals. And I think that we can work towards our community goals through respect for one another and through increased lines of communication and a little bit of give and take from each and every group. So I look forward to hopefully working with the many groups to reach our goals and continue Boulder's bright future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Yerba. Bill?
Hi, I'm Bill Riggler. And before I start, I just wanted to recognize somebody. It's Cindy Carlisle's birthday today. We have the same barber, apparently. She looks far better than I do. My name is Bill Riggler, and I'm running for Boulder City Council specifically because I do love Boulder. What brought me to Boulder is probably the same thing that brought most of you here. I love our entrepreneurial community. I love our open spaces. I love our sense of innovation. And more than anything, I think I like, I really love our little bit sense of weird that we have. Now, what brought me to Boulder, and I think many of you know this, is I came here to work for Al Gore at his climate change initiative as his spokesman. And it's really challenging for me to see what's going on in Houston right now and not think about our own flooding that took place a couple of years ago. And for me, it underscores the urgency, not only of reducing our carbon emissions, but also making sure that we have plans in place for resilience and adaptation. For the last two years, I've had the great privilege of serving as the chairman of the Transportation Advisory Board, where I have helped propel a safety agenda, working in partnership with community groups, the business community, think tanks, and many others. I've also had the great privilege of serving on the Chamber of Commerce's Community Affairs Council, where I serve across and alongside three dozen civic and community and business leaders on the defining public policy issues of our day. I also have the opportunity to serve on the marijuana advisory panel, as well as on the Boulder Ensemble Theater Company. Community is super important to me. Now, my agenda and my priorities are focused on safety, mobility, and vitality. Safety in our neighborhoods, in our civic spaces, and in our streets for all users. Mobility, in terms of how are we bringing more people to where they need to be as efficiently and effectively as possible. And vitality is smart growth and middle-income housing. So my name is Bill Riggler. My website is billforboulder.com, and thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Hello, my name is Adam Swetlik, and I'm a candidate for Boulder City Council. I'm probably one of the least well-known candidates, but I am the easiest one to pick out of a crowd. If you need to find me afterwards, I'll be up here. So a lot of what we are planning for this run is just reducing inequality. It's become clear in the last election that inequality is a major issue, not only in our nation, but right here in Boulder. It's incredibly important that we start addressing, you know, the inequalities that Boulder is constantly building up. Right now, we have tons of jobs, but not enough people to work them. And definitely not enough people living in this city who can afford to live and work here at the same time. Like everyone has addressed, we have a lot of the same. Like everyone has addressed, we have a lot of the same, you know, policy positions and just a lot of the same ideas, but it's important that the representation is there for everybody. What I'm hoping to do is represent a group of people who are underrepresented, and that's the working class. So I myself am a working-class individual. I've held two jobs since I graduated from the University of Colorado in 2010, and, you know, I go to work every day, but I go to work on the weekend. This is what we do. And it's hard to get representation for those people simply because they're constantly working. So it's my plan to be one of those people who speaks for the youth, for the working-class people, for the people who need that voice in the community, because right now, I think it's very underrepresented. And I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Adam. Sam?
Hello, everybody. My name is Sam Weaver, and I'm running for reelection to the Boulder City Council. Thank you all for being here. It shows a lot of civic-mindedness that everyone would come out tonight to spend their evening and hear about this stuff. So the two questions that you'd want to ask are, why are you running? And what makes you think you're qualified to represent the city on city council? And I'll start with the why I'm running, and it's something you've already heard a lot of people say, but I love the community here. And by community, I mean the people. And the people of Boulder, they're active, they're engaged, innovative, curious, environmentally aware. This is a community that I really enjoy being part of as well as representing. This community has built some fantastic institutions, the University of Colorado, the federal labs that are here, Ball Aerospace, IBM, and a whole host of great nonprofits, including Thistle Communities, EFA, Bridge House, the Community Foundation of Boulder County. These are all places and institutions are emblematic of the quality of the people that staff them. My past leadership, I moved here 28 years ago. I lived on Sugarloaf Mountain for 19 years, and for 15 years, I was a volunteer firefighter. I served as chief for two years. Once I moved to town, I really focused on renewable energy activism. I was on the Board of the Colorado Solar Energy Industries Association, Clean Energy Action, and a host of others. I run a small business here in Boulder called Cool Energy. We focus on energy efficiency and renewable energy. And I served on the planning board for two years, and I've been on council for four. So I believe that I've got a lot of qualities and insights that provide strong leadership, and I've got a lot of knowledge now, after four years on council, on how the city processes work. So I look forward to speaking with you more here and afterwards, and I'd appreciate your vote for city council. Thanks a bunch.
Hi. I'm almost as tall as Adam, but my name is Mary Young, and you might be wondering why I'm wearing a clothespin at my skirt. I was warned by Leslie that the seating arrangements were not very female-friendly, so I wasn't going to let that stop me from wearing a short skirt, so I dropped my clothespin. And I'll sit down. Actually, I'll just stand up, and now you won't be able to see me. So I came to Boulder in 1978. Actually, Boulder came to me. I received a phone call from IBM asking me if I wanted to come up here and work for the summer, and I said, "Yeah." And I hung up, and I looked and turned into my roommates, and I said, "First, Boulder." And so anyway, I came here, and I have been here almost ever since. I didn't have any children, and the reason is because I spent my formative years, my early teens, raising my four siblings. By the time I got to be 20, I'd had children. So why am I running? Because I want to carry the important social, environmental, and economic values that we have in this town. The social values that have brought us a human services tax and a human services department, not many, very many towns here have, very many cities in the country have that. The environmental values have brought us open space, and all of these guys have already talked about that, but nobody brought up the first carbon tax in the country. And the economic values, which I feel we're falling behind on, which are to provide businesses and an economy that works for everyone in our community. I stand for community first and putting people over profit, and I have been speaking up for all of the people that Adam spoke about for four years, the people that are working, the people that can't come and participate. So vote for me. I'm Mary. Thank you, Mary. So now we're going to go to the content portion, and start with you, Jill. And I will ask you, you got it? Okay. What do you believe is the appropriate role for the city of Boulder in addressing human service needs such as housing, food, and healthcare for low-income and marginalized people in our community?
Thanks, Leslie. I do believe the city has an important role in addressing these needs, not only because it's the right thing to do and because there but for certain events go I, but also we know that it benefits our city economically and in many other ways to take care of the most vulnerable among us. I think we have opportunities here that are broad. It's not just allocating more money from the general fund. You know, I see housing as one of the most important human service needs in our city because, really, lack of affordable housing is at the root of food insecurity. It's at the root ultimately of homelessness. It's at the root of, you know, if you can't afford your home, you can't afford quality healthcare. And ultimately, the city pays for that. So I think that we have many opportunities to increase accessible housing through regulatory incentives, through fee reductions, through zoning overlays. You know, I saw our support of Attention Homes as a really important step in social service needs. Again, it's not just about throwing money at it. We also need to partner with our nonprofit community who are doing an excellent job for our human services. Our vulnerable populations.
Okay, thank you, Jill. Next, Mark McIntyre. What strategies do you support regarding land use, housing, and transportation policies and programs to address the impacts of our in-commuting workforce?
Well, the impacts are so apparent to all of us. If you have to go anywhere in any morning and get on 36, a lot of times, for me, I'm lucky enough that if I have to travel that day, it's going eastbound on 36 rather than westbound, and I look at all of our in-commuters or eastbound on Arapahoe and see all the people coming in. So as far as strategies, I think we need to look at alternatives to RTD. We need to take control, like we're attempting to do with our municipalization, we need to take control of our transportation options, and we need to work with businesses like Ball, like Zayo, that work where a lot of people are commuting into these businesses. And we need to work with them to provide mass transportation opportunities. And then, once we bring the people into town, we need to have last-mile connections and cycling, walking, and pedestrian infrastructure that really makes sense. We are a leader in cycling infrastructure and pedestrian infrastructure, but there are far greater goals that we can work to achieve. And we can look at other cities like Amsterdam, Portland, where cycling infrastructure and pedestrian infrastructure get people where they want to go without their car. We are a city of people. We are a city of vital-thinking people. We are not a city of cars. And for far too long, our whole planning, infrastructure, development regulations have focused around how to accommodate cars and how to park them. And we need to change that mindset so that we're accommodating people and not cars.
Thank you, Mark. Mirabai? Your question is, accessory dwelling units, sometimes called granny flats, have been considered as one option for expanding affordable housing options in established neighborhoods. Please explain your position on whether or not ADUs are an appropriate affordable housing tool for our community.
Thank you. So I believe that ADUs are an option for our town. It's out-of-the-box thinking that we're going to need to help create the affordable housing in this community that is so desired. I do, however, believe that one-size-fits-all can below up. I don't think it's always perfect for every community, and I think that there's a lot of our neighborhoods that are experiencing stress and pressure from growth and outside developments. So I think that we need to gather the neighborhoods and start working on some of these sub-community plans that we've started to address. Let's work with the neighborhoods to understand what fits into them, because who best to understand what fits in their neighborhoods and the special little quirks about their neighborhoods? Let's make sure that they're part of the conversation and understanding how they want their community to develop, because they're the ones that invested in those houses. They are like myself, the middle class. I worked very hard for my home, and I'd like to see the neighborhood that I invested in, I'd like to have some say in it. And I think many others in the community feel this option. And so if the ADUs work for a specific neighborhood, fantastic, let's move forward, let's work with the community. But making just a one-size-fits-all, and this is what you're going to get, I don't think it's worked, and I think that the biggest thing is bringing in that public participation working group. Let's bring in the voice of people.
Thank you. Bill, you're up next. Tell us your vision for open space moving forward, including specifically the challenges regarding the success of huge visitation. Would you prioritize either protection or recreation on a hypothetical new property?
My name is Bill Rigler. The founder of the Sierra Club, John Mirabai, once said that of all the paths you take in road, excuse me, of all the paths you take in life, make sure at least a few of them are dirt. And I think that that's really important when we talk about open spaces, right? They're meant to be used, they're meant to be appreciated, they're meant to preserve. And I think that what we need to do more than anything is to find that appropriate balance between preservation on the one hand and appreciation through use on the other. I'm very, very excited to understand and learn and be a part of the open space master planning project that's about to begin, because it's going to be a very participatory process, one that will be absolutely open and will kind of serve as a pilot for the recommendations of the public participation working group. But it's meant to be an inclusive, far-ranging process that's meant to bring in the perspectives of all of us, so that we all have an equal say in how our open spaces are utilized moving forward. And it's also meant to put some guardrails around what is that usage, so that we have appropriate care and maintenance for those programs. Now, one of the things that I've been involved with in my role as the Transportation Advisory Board is working very specifically on Chautauqua, and how do we create transportation and busing up to Chautauqua so that we can minimize the damage to the trails, so that we can deal with parking problems, so that we can deal with reducing carbon emissions? And I think taking this systemic and holistic approach to transportation, parking, carbon emissions, is a critical element to managing usage for our open spaces. I'm really, really excited about all of the opportunities that we have for open spaces, and as I said, it's one of the reasons why I moved here. And I use open space almost every single day. I'm a trail runner, I'm a mountain biker, I'm a hiker, and I try on snowshoe in the winter. And I will do everything that I can to ensure that we're both preserving, using, and maintaining our open space appropriately. My name is Bill Rigler, and my website is billforboulder.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Adam here next. Do you support the Transportation Master Plan's goal of increasing the mode share of bicycles from 10% to 30% by 2035 to achieve the community's environmental and livability goals? If so, what concrete steps do you propose to achieve this? And how do you anticipate doing that while maintaining safety for cyclists and motorists alike?
I'm Adam Swetlik. I stole that from Bill. I do approve of the Transportation Master Plan. I think, you know, it's important for the sustainability and just the overall livability of our community to increase the share of bicycle use in our community. That being said, a few ways to improve that ride share is keeping up with those safe crossing zones. We've installed a bunch of safe crossing zones throughout Boulder in the last few years. We also need to do more in putting up lights for safety on trails, not only for the safety of the riders, but the safety of the community in general. And we need to do this in a well-thought-out and well-managed way. I think we all sort of remember our rightsizing issues that we had for a while. I lived off of Folsom at the time that rightsizing was happening, and it was almost an overnight experience to have one less lane of traffic, which the bikers could use. And I totally appreciate that, working towards the goals of Boulder, to have increased bicycle usage, but the rollout has to be smart and sustainable. An incremental rollout with good marketing is going to be incredibly important to actually let the community get ready for these changes and make them effectively. As you know, rightsizing had to be rolled back, and I think that was more a marketing problem than anything. Luckily, my day job is marketing, so I'm happy to come up with solutions to that and provide ideas to make those incremental changes that are going to be, you know, very helpful to the future of the community. Thank you, Adam Swetlik, running for Boulder City Council.
Thank you, Adam. Okay. Sam, it's been mentioned that one of the unique parts of Boulder is not just open space and the environmental things we've done, but we are quite unusual as a city in having a human services master plan. What do you believe are the most pressing human service needs in the Boulder area, and why?
So great. I was hoping you would get this question, because I think we have to start from the most vulnerable and needy and look up the scale from there. And the ones who are most in need in our community at any given moment are people without shelter, right? If they don't have access to shelter, they may also not have access to food. And so homelessness is something that we need to address, and it's what you would call a wicked problem, meaning that every time you try and make a solution here, you cause another problem or ripple effect over there. Example of that is when we provide emergency sheltering, which we should do, we don't want people to freeze to death on our streets. It makes it more attractive for people who might travel here and may spend a night or two at the homeless shelter. So one thing I'm very glad about that we're doing is we had this homeless working group, and our human services department convened this discussion among all the service providers, so Bridge House and the Boulder Shelter for the Homeless, Mental Health Partners, everybody who's a stakeholder here, came together, and they said, "Are we using best practices?" And the answer was, "No, we can do better. You can always do better with this." And so the best practices that are going to be implemented here shortly include coordinated intake, so we know who we're serving, so we identify what the challenges are for each individual, and we can prioritize services for those individuals based on vulnerability, not based on the lottery system. Another thing that we're going to implement that's best practices is navigation services. This is an attempt to focus on exits. How do we take people who are on the streets and want to get out of their situation and make sure that they have a path to that? For some people, it may be a program bed, for others, it may be Housing First, for others, it may be family members that need to know where they are, be in touch with them, and put them into some kind of living arrangement with them. So one thing I want to emphasize about homelessness is, we see a particular kind of homeless individual, typically a single male, and they're in public spaces, but I want to remind everyone that half of our homeless are families.
Thank you, Sam. Mary, a long question, I apologize. What transportation solutions would you suggest to ease congestion, especially resulting from the 49,000 in commuters, specifically those that drive alone? Would you favor solutions to improve roads and parking, bus or other transportation, cycling or walking, or some combination thereof? How would you fund transportation improvements? Do you favor higher parking costs and other disincentives to driving? So first of all, let me start by saying that years ago, in the comp plan, we passed a policy, Policy Number 5.02, which is Regional Jobs Center. By doing so, we consigned ourselves to a certain amount of incommuting. So that's the reality of it, that's what we decided, and so we have to accept a certain amount of incommuting. So how do we address that? We address it through regional transportation, which we have been doing through the BRT lane and the BRT buses, which have become really, really highly utilized and...
which have become really, really highly utilized and are being used. How would I fund this? We have a transportation tax, a transportation tax that has been in place since 1967, which has enabled us to do things like the EcoPass. And the EcoPass actually... Anybody who has an EcoPass in their pocket is seven times more likely to use the bus. So one of the things that I would like to see us do is have the community-wide EcoPass. And I've been working on that through the Policy Advisory Committee with the county and currently with John on the public... And I want to say Public Participation Working Group, but it's not. It's got the same acronym. It's the Pass Program Working Group with RTD. And we're trying to figure out the best and most equitable way to provide passes to the whole community. And how would I fund that? I believe that a head tax would be the best way to fund it.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. Now, this is the opportunity to have each candidate spend up to two minutes answering either of the two questions. What is the most important issue to you in Boulder? And what kind of leadership will you provide for addressing it? Or your legacy as a Boulder City Council member, what kind of legacy would you look to leave?
Talk about my legacy. I would love to be remembered as both a visionary leader and someone who just loved the heck out of her community and served people. What does it mean to be a visionary leader? I think it means that we boldly champion ideas that are right for our city. On energy, that we move forward as rapidly as possible with two renewables, to rooftop solar, to incentivizing electrification of our homes and our vehicles. I want to see gas lines become a thing of a past in our commercial spaces and in our houses. I want to see solar sidewalks and microgrids throughout the city. On housing, what does it mean to be a visionary leader? There's opportunities all around. Let's look differently at this problem. Supran, I want to put two layers of housing on top of all of the places on Wilderness Circle. How perfect would that be? Sandwiched in between Goose Creek Path, Valmont Bike Park, or Valmont Road and Foothills Parkway. A mix of new and old that already has art galleries and commercial spaces and breweries. We don't have to lose commercial or industrial to do this. What does it mean to love the heck out of people? I have a proven history of being a woman of action. You know, I'm someone... I saw what was happening to people in mobile homes with tax lien investors, and I don't just share it on Facebook. I bought up those tax liens myself and saved the mobile homeowners and then took it to the state level. When the mom from my kid's school calls and says she's being evicted from her house, I don't just refer her to social services. I got my community together, raised $40,000, put in money of my own, and I bought her a mobile home, and it totally changed her life. These are actions that I do all the time. I'm lucky enough to own a rental property. I keep it open six months a year just for women and children. I'm going to continue to do that. I'm going to continue to be a lover of people in my community and embrace people. That's my vision. That's my legacy.
All right. Thank you. Mark, how about you?
That's a tough afterthought. And, you know, I want to say before I go on to... I'm going to take the legacy question. But in my involvement in the City Council race so far, I've been just stunned with the quality of people with which I am competing. It's part of what I love about Boulder is that these people are really great. So as far as a legacy goes, I would envision a city 20 years from now. If I think about a legacy that I would look back on, it would be a city that continued to lead. It would be a city that has continued to lead on environmental goals, on decarbonization, on transportation goals, where we're really innovative in how we move people about outside of the car. It would be on economic and business vitality, where we have a community that continues to foster startup businesses and young families being able to move into the town. Now, when we move young families in, we need to change our thinking about our single-family occupancy homes. And that families are changing, and their housing options need to change with them. And we need to provide different, better options because families want... may want something other than the quarter-acre lot. And they certainly may not be able to afford the quarter-acre lot in a single-family home. So the vision is that... One other aspect of that vision is our open space in mountain parks is truly an economic engine for this town. It's what brought many of us here. But it has reached a state of disrepair. We have flood repair, flood damage that hasn't taken place in four years. And this gem of Boulder needs to be managed and maintained and taken care of in a way that it has not been to date. Mark McIntyre. Mark for Council, markforcouncil.com.
Thank you, Mark. Mirabai?
So my campaign slogan is, "A New Generation's Commitment to Boulder's Legacy of Stewardship." This isn't my legacy. It's all of our legacy. And Boulder's legacy to stewardship is something that has made this town such an incredible place for all of us to live in. Places like Boulder didn't happen on accident. Places like Boulder happened because of a direct result of specific intended action by forward-thinking individuals. Over the years, these citizens had a vision for this town that's nestled in our foothills as a shining example to the world of a community that chose green belts over sprawl and guiding documents of carefully managed growth over the haphazard and random way in which many communities evolve. I think Boulder has celebrated a very rich diversity of race, religion, sexual identity, income, national heritage. And during a time where many in the states are regressing to hurtful, painful rhetoric, I think we've chosen the opposite. So this is the legacy that I want to move forward with. A legacy that puts the people first and just loves the heck out of this town. So I'm Mirabai Maygle. And if anything that I've said here today touches you in any way, I would ask for your vote for Boulder City Council. And my website is maygelforcouncil.org.
Thank you, Mirabai. Bill?
You may not know this, but my name is Bill Riggler. I'm running for Boulder City Council to bring a progressive voice on the issues of safety, mobility, and vitality. Let me talk to you a little bit about why safety is so important to me. Last July, a cyclist by the name of Bill Davis was tragically hit and killed by a drug driver while biking. Bill was a father of two and a husband, and it was terrible. And that, for me, really led me, in my role as chairman of TAB, to really undertake a safety initiative and a safety agenda in partnership with every conceivable stakeholder. It's an effort that we have literally put at the top of our agenda for every TAB meeting since then, and it's something that we continue unabated. Because of our work and thanks to the leadership of council and so many people in this room, we recently passed something called the Neighborhood Speed Management Program that is meant to give neighborhoods a voice in how they address speeding and unsafe behaviors in their own neighborhoods. And I want to draw attention to this because I think it's a crucial learning from where we were two years ago with the Folsom Bike Lane, which my good friend Adam mentioned. That was a program that, for better or worse, ended up being a case study in how not to roll out a program. And so what we did with the NSMP was we took those lessons and we created a broad-based participatory program that included email, social media, more use of the website than had ever been done before. We solicited and received more than 1,000 in-person and online comments. And at the end of the day, the NSMP was created because the community got involved from the beginning and had sustained participation throughout. So my legacy and my vision around safety, mobility, and vitality is that we keep pushing and that we keep serving as a voice for those without a voice, and that we learn from our mistakes, and we do it better and better and better every time. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Her daddy's lying. Well, everyone, I'm Adam Swetlik. I'm running for Boulder City Council. And I want my legacy to be one that the working-class people here are represented fully. We're trying to reduce inequality at all levels of government, and it starts at the bottom. So it's incredibly important that everyone in their community feels like an insider. Currently, having to spend all my time working, I feel like an outsider. I don't get to participate in a lot of these community organizations. And I feel like an outsider because of it. We need people who represent those outsiders. We need people who are going to actually listen and fix the problems of affordable housing, fix the problems of people living where they work, fix those problems that, you know, affect a smaller and smaller majority of Boulder because they can't simply afford to live here. I've been a renter for 10 years. Last year, I was able to purchase a home, and it's a one-bedroom condo. It costs what, you know, a four-bedroom house could cost just in... I don't want to say Kansas, but in Kansas. And, you know, that's really unfortunate. It just doesn't provide people with the opportunities they need to get their feet under them and build a life. It just doesn't happen in Boulder the way it should right now. So I want to represent those people who are young, coming out of college, who are working class, who just don't have the time to really, you know, get involved with the community at the level that they should. And that's the only way we're going to build a community that's worth living in. Adam Swetlik.
Running for City Council. Sam?
So I'm Sam Weaver, running for City Council. And I like to tackle wicked problems, and I'm going to talk about two of them. So not just one, but two. The first problem is climate change and how this is going to affect everyone all over the world. We can see it in Houston right now. We saw it in our floods in 2013. And it is something that we have to tackle on two fronts. We have to stop emitting as much carbon as we are currently into the atmosphere. And the city of Boulder has done a lot of good on that front. And we have to adapt to the changes that are coming. We have to make ourselves hardened for the floods that will come and the wildfires that will come. And there's some specific ways that the city is doing that right now. We're looking at neighborhood resilient centers, gathering points when these occurrences happen, when the catastrophes strike, where neighbors can come and meet with neighbors and then go back out and help the neighbors who need help from within. It also means tackling what's going on with generation of electricity. So it either means municipalizing, or it means a good deal with Excel. Excel announced yesterday they're getting to 55% renewables by 2028. Good on you. Now, where's the other 45 going to come from that Boulder has as our goal? The other is about how we have community dialogue. Our democracy is broken at the top. It is a dysfunctional mess-up there. And our state is logjammed because of split houses. So right now, locality, cities, municipalities is where all the action is, and that's true for Boulder as well. We need to engage with each other with love and care. We need to talk with each other even when we disagree in a civil manner. And we need to be able to disagree without being disagreeable. So one thing that I will commit to is always doing that. And I think I've evidenced that through some of the fights that I've been through and still been able to be good friends with the people who are on council with me. So I would appreciate your vote this November, and I look forward to hearing what your concerns are at the mixer afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
I'm Mary. Hi, I'm Mary Young, youngforcouncil.org. I want to be the person that is remembered for making Boulder walk its talk when it comes to diversity and being welcoming and inclusive. Throughout the last several years, I've spent time cultivating relationships with those communities. And they include people of color and people of low income. And what they say is that they don't feel included. And I've spoken up for them on the many issues and in many ways, and on the many issues that come before council. And here are some of the things I did these past four years. So behind the scenes, I worked with staff to develop a nighttime parking permit because the parking prices were going to go up for people that were previously able to get away with not paying for parking. And so now they will have a reduced parking permit. They have no choice. The people get off at 2:00 a.m. But to drive, you can't take a bus. And if you live out of town, you have to drive. So another thing that I worked really hard on with Nikhil back there, too, is Indigenous Peoples' Day. It sounds like a small thing, but it's a huge thing to a lot of people, and that matters. And I also had staff delay the appointment of people on both the Public Participation Working Group and on the Health Equity Committee so that we could get proper representation. The Boulder Valley Complan was silent on race and ethnicity. No longer. So those are the things that I've done. I've walked my talk. Help me, help you do the same. Now more than ever. Thank you, Mary.
So let's thank this group of candidates. In a minute, I'm going to ask all the candidates to stand up so we can thank them all as a group. But before we do that, I want to remind you that we are broadcasting this live and it's on the Boulder Chamber of Facebook. We are also looking forward to posting the pictures, the contact information, and the answers to the questions, all the questions that were asked by each of these candidates. And it will be on the Chamber website. If you haven't had a chance to do that, it's a steep lift, I know, because it's a lot of work. But if you would get that information to us, we will look forward to posting all of your information available to the community. I'd also like to, before we thank everyone, remind you that we actually have about 45 minutes before we're asked to leave Zayo. And there are food and...
Stay all night.
That's all right. It's all right. We actually have a permit. And so there will be food and drink out there. I encourage all of you to stay if you can, to meet the candidates personally, to ask questions, to talk to them, and really explore issues that are of interest to you.